It's seven o'clock and let's start the meeting with the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll call.
Mr. Grant.
Here.
Ms. Woods.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Frank.
Physically.
You have the form, sir.
Very good. We have, and next up on our list is the consent agenda items. Do you have a motion? To consider the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
About a second.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Fine. This portion of the meeting, I'll read, it's a citizen's opportunity for comment, public comments, and a reminder that it's a citizen's opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. This agenda item is set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business, other than those listed on the agenda. Please understand that the council will not take the action on your comments at this meeting in accordance with Iowa's open meetings law. The mayor and the city council welcome comments from the public pursuant to the adopted rules and procedures of the Almond City Council. At no time is it appropriate to use profane, obscene, or slanderous language. The mayor may limit each speaker to five minutes. Is there anybody here that would like to address the council?
Have you just got a real quick one?
A student name and address and...
Robert Schramm, 250 Northeast, 141st Place here in Almond. And at the work session, the storage container was brought up and you asked Jason if I could be grandfathered in, and he said I wouldn't because he'll put a whole bunch more on to let everybody know I will not do that. And he also stated that they're $500 apiece. That one of mine is between $4,000 and $5,000. Then I spent a week with an angle grinder and a wire brush cleaning it up and painting it so it looked nice. It's all I got.
Okay, that's correction and you duly noted.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the council?
Not this time around, no.
Okay, we're good. Okay, the citizen's opportunity for comment is concluded. And now we will go into the action discussion items. First up is the Polk County Sheriff, Shane Gregal. We have in front of you his report. And does anybody have any questions? Comments? On the report? So, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Yeah.
No, we're not doing that. Okay. Got it. Okay, that's, that item is done. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is receive and file Beanstrand Tim's report on wastewater treatment plant. Our Polk school, Vince Rascal is here with Beanstrand Tim and kind of give us a little bit of an update on.
Of course.
Give the foreword.
Okay. So, we've looked at what's there right now with these sand filters. In our permit, you have to monitor for flow and then different organic parameters. So...
Is that called BOD?
Yes, there's a few of them. Yep, of course. BOD is kind of the main one. It gives you an idea of the oxygen demanding bacteria in the water. So, it's a key marker of active pollutants in the water. There's a few others. There's suspended solids, ammonia, all things that are per aquatic life, human health. So, organically for those different parameters, everything seems to be okay without operating now, getting good treatment. The limiting factor for the existing filters and the expansion are going to be how much flow is going to it. So, what I've put together is a summary of flow scenarios, what's there now, and looking ahead to the future. So, there's three different graphs and I'll kind of do my best to explain what I've done. So, the first one is...
Do you guys have something?
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, this top one is the last five years of monthly average flows. That orange line is what the DNR currently has the influent flow capacity at. That's at 16,000 gallons a day. You can see in May, they peaked up and over it a little bit. It's not a huge deal, but that's kind of showing you how these trends. The school's kind of filling out what they have. And what they have right now are three sand filters. The next one shows what we're calling the full build out of North Polk schools. This is kind of a projection on what their years would look like with additional students and staff. I've got about 2,700 total school and staff for this scenario. And these other lines show you what sand or additional sand filters are kind of giving you for treatment. So, I've got five, six, and seven would be the total number for additional capacity. And this, good night, Vic. Shows now the layouts of where the filters would go. So, from here, five won't get it down to the school. I think six total was kind of your guys' original plan before combining with Almond was brought to the table. There isn't room for a seven. So, that's kind of the ultimate maximizing of this space would be seven total filters. And now, here's where it gets really fun. So, the next graph shows, again, this is school flows. What we need to do with DNR is talk to them about what per capita flow rate we can rate the plant for. So, historical usage is about 10 per capita. So, your students and your mattresses are about 10 gallons a day. The Iowa administrative code has a table for different non-residential users. And in that, a school with a cafeteria and a gym is supposed to be 17. So, that's the difference in these two graphs. This, on the second page, is historical usage of 10. The next one is with the DNR recommendation of 17. So, you know, it would be great. I don't think they would have a big issue. They take historical usage into account all the time. I'm not going to guarantee it though, but I mean, I would be comfortable with saying 10 per capita is the school's usage. So, what that means for extra capacity, if you're doing seven filters at 10 gallons per capita with the school, what's left over is, you know, maybe 10,000 gallons a day, which, again, here's another, DNR per capita with residential is 100 per capita. Whether that's your guys' usage or not, it's kind of tough to tell without wastewater records. But that's, if you don't have it, they recommend 100. So, if you have 10,000 extra, that's what out of 100 people.
100 people, 100 houses.
People. Yeah. So, I mean, if you assume two and a half per household, potentially, right?
Right.
So, that's kind of where it lands. And that's, and it's, it's tough to say without any sort of DNR blessing on hand, which flow scenario I can go to and where that lands you. If I have to do 17 with the school expansion, there's not a whole lot of wiggle room with seven filters.
So, what you're saying is if they expand their facility to maximum capacity, they're going to be using all of what they...
Most of it, yes.
Most of it.
And there's, there's an additional game we could, it would take some investigating we could, we could play with, the recircu, the recirculating through the filters and different loading rates on it. But that gets to be a little tricky. And there's not real clear-cut guidelines for designing that.
Do you have an estimate of how many houses this is put up?
Sure. Just call it 50 maybe?
How many?
50.
Can I ask you, just to clarify this question? The data, so when you said the, what was the capacity of this total individuals that you had accounted for on the school side for this graph?
I went up to 2,700 total.
So, 27, that'd be 27 students and staff on the Almond campus. That's the number?
Yes, yeah, 2,700.
Okay.
And North Polk schools will grow, so they allow for that next 10 years. Take that and play for this flow rate.
Right.
How many houses we put in it?
Yeah, yeah. The number that I was working off of was 2,700 total for the school. If that changes, I mean, I can, I can change that.
Well, and that's a moving target because...
Yes.
Because, you know, we've got lots online in Elkhart. And I've been told by a couple of developers that there's 5,000 new housing units in Ankeny area alone.
Okay.
Will come into this school district. And then I'm seeing a lot of them over there in North, in Polk City.
Okay.
I don't know how many are over there.
Yeah.
But, you know, so, I guess, you know, we're spending the money on this study and this study is telling us right now that, that even with a major expansion of that facility over there, that there's really not going to be enough room for the city of Almond to tag on.
Right, yeah. Without kind of a sophisticated change if you look at the operation. If you really, you could probably get more flow through one of these filters, but it would take different pumps and it would be a bit more labor. I wouldn't, what you've got right now works really well. So, I'd be hesitant to try to kind of mess with what you're doing. And yeah, and if you do all that and advise you have 20 more homes, that, we've done all that for...
That's nothing. Yeah, nothing. And, I mean, you know, we're, you have to see we're in a little dilemma because we've already spent $5,000 and $5,000 with the city of Ankeny, or not Ankeny, but 5,000 with Polk County.
Yes.
And we did a study, $20 million to go to Elkhart, $20 million to build standalone.
Yeah.
And now we spent the money on this situation and it's not getting Almond anywhere.
Sure.
As far as a sanitary sewer system. And so, I mean, I, that's kind of disconcerting to us.
I understand.
That we have to meet the growth of this community.
Yeah.
And the volume of students and staff that come to this community to go to school. And, and it leaves no wiggle room for the city of Almond again.
I understand that, yeah. Does 2,700 seem like the right number with you guys? Just from hearing what is it now?
So, so total school is like 2,200, but probably 700, 800 of those students are on Polk City.
Yeah, I'd say 650 to 750.
650 to 750 here in Polk City. But that number of 22 doesn't include staff. So, I don't know if exactly.
And then, yeah, throw in, we have events too that have crowds.
Right.
I did have one question for you. Was, was this based on like implementation of aerators in their original system?
So, the aerators help with, they don't help with flow, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Yeah, that just helps with your BOD and ammonia removal, which you guys have already, aren't getting really good treatment on. So, I don't think the aerator would give you much room for all of that.
So, but either way, the max you're saying is the 2,700. So, does the 2,700 take us up to the capacity of current system plus seven more sand filters?
No, and so, this is, this is, it's, when I say seven sand filters, right, that's four additional sand filters.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, all right.
So, totally, right.
So, that's going from five, four, five, to six, to seven.
Right, right, right. And that's, that peak in May, you must have had, or I guess...
Doesn't make sense.
We've, we've had a couple incidents where we had toilet going out of football field nonstop and no one was out there and knew about it. Could have been that hit. You know, when we had this meeting previously, what we were wondering about was, and you can see in the historical data, just not in this last round, we should, we should see a pretty big dip in June, July, and August.
Yep.
You don't really see it on this one.
Right, right. No, no. And that's...
And some of the historical, you can see a little dip in December too. And just with that week break, that kind of shows up. So, I'm not sure on the accuracy of the June, July, August, and why. Because there really shouldn't be much anything going on that year.
Yeah. No, and on that first one, you can see that, right, and when you're losing a 4,000 gallon drop there almost.
So, you have that 2,700, there's a certain amount that you'll peak at before you physically don't have enough room for any more students, right? With, with the lane that you have, you're going to build so much. Is that, is that the 2,700 or is that...
Well, the 20, I mean, I think the, well, I guess I don't know. The 20, the basis of the 27 was just...
That was true. Yeah, so see, that was the number that I had, yeah. Okay, yeah.
As to what to shoot for on what hour. Is that as is today or that's in a couple years?
That's, yeah, whenever that happens. I think right now, I thought, I think 1750 was about where you were at right now. But that might not...
And that could be roughly with student, staff, whatever, macro right and et cetera.
Is that just this campus?
No.
2,200.
2,200, 10 to 4. So, just humor your, your, your moment. So, if I heard you correctly, James, that you think that there might be somewhere around 650 to 700.
To 700.
Yeah. We'll just use the 650 because that's what I wrote down here.
No.
In Polk City.
In Polk City.
650 to 750 in Polk City.
Of the 22.
So, you're in that 15-ish of students that would be my bad.
Yeah, I'll guess so.
My bad. All right. So, give about 15 of them here. So, would it, even at 50% increase, you're still looking at 2,250. Is it even possible to have a 50% increase with the existing facilities that are here?
Uh, I don't want to say no.
You know, just you want to know, right?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I, I want to...
I know that, you know, we've done those additions to Central. Central, we kind of project as being the one that is going to get full probably the quickest because of North Ankeny. And that leaves us room at West and Big Creek. So, we would be getting creative to put more bodies there.
Sure.
Before we would over here at the elementary level. Obviously, we don't have another option, middle school and high school. High school technically could add a wing still. Middle school, you're pretty landlocked where you're at.
Like a banking grove, like you said, but that population's going to change a lot.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I guess I would stand back and look at this, you know, Almond has done their due diligence. We have studied all phases, all factors. We are just pretty much stuck with the realization that, that Almond is not going to have a sewer in the near future. It'll be all that we can do to meet the growth of the school system. You know, with, with the traffic and the volume of people that come to Almond. And, you know, it's good to have the information, you know, to, to look at, you know, for our planning down the road. You know, we're trying to see where we're at and where we can go and what we can do. But, you know, the writing's on the wall. Unless somebody else has got an idea, we just, we're just not there. I mean, you know, it's, it's a situation where if Almond doesn't grow, then somebody else will grow around Almond and choke us out, you know? And we will not have a way to even do any growth and economic development because we won't have a way, way to pay for it because of annexation. When they grow around us, they annex it. And so, that just kind of chokes us off and not allows us to, to do anything, you know, other than we host a $190 school system. It's only going to get bigger. And, you know, if somebody's got a better idea, you know, I've tried all different angles of this thing and there's, it's just not there. I don't know, guys. Chime in.
Yeah, as I was dragging up here, Ankeny is almost at 126. At some point, it's a 5,000.
There's a sewer up here. Yeah. You know, I'm going to be having a meeting with the future, or the new mayor of Ankeny, more or less waving the white flag and, you know, coming to, coming to it from a different, different angle. But, you know, I'm going to be, be their partner. And we would like to, you know, just be their partner, not their oh. And I don't know where that gets us, other than I would like to get like a five or 10-year, 20-year agreement as far as where Ankeny plans to go north and east and west. And so, we can see where we're, where we're going to go. You know, we've had that on the table with the previous mayor and, and city manager, but I never got any contact at all back on that. So, I'll be pursuing that and see if we can get that, that established. But, you know, that's, that's where we're at. So, anybody have any other questions for Mr. Miss there?
Do you hear of any possible grants or anything coming up for like the school or city of Almond courses or systems?
You know, I can sure look. Might go off the top of my head. Haven't, yeah, I don't. But the very well could be, it's a good option.
I just have one last question too. The difference to the chart number two was, you know, that's got the 10, at 10 gallons per, and the last chart is you got 17.
Yep.
And the reason for capital in the 10 versus 17 is?
So, 10 is historical, which you've been using.
Okay. And then 17 is the recommendation?
Yeah, 17 is what they have written in the code.
Okay. So, if we were to build something, we would need the 17 is the number we would need by forces and things.
I would, I would plan on it. But if you have good, I mean, we've got a good five years showing you that 10.
It's still, like, I don't want to bank on that as far as from the basis.
Right, right. And, you know, it's, it's a conversation to have with the permitting department of the DNR. And most of the time, if you have good historical usage, they'll work with you.
It does seem, it does seem like there should be at least some wiggle room there because, I mean, you have data to show the 10 and they're, they're wanting nearly double like you're planning. And that, it seems a little like non-secretary.
Right, right. And, and it's, they give it an increase when you add a gym and a locker room to it and your middle schoolers and grade schoolers aren't using water no longer. So, I think they take all that into account. That's just kind of to get things started. That's, that's where you jump off from.
They, they just base the numbers off of square footage?
No, that's a good question. See exactly how they came up with that, if likely, yeah.
So, how do we, where, how can we get to an actual number? Because right now, we're dealing with possibilities and theoretical...
Yeah. No, so that's kind of the next step on our end. It's all, get it tested. And when we put the whole report together, it will have, you know, I've got the organic loadings like this. But it, I don't think it does much good to, you know, show that to everybody here tonight. So, it'll be putting it all together, talking with the reviewer at the DNR about this, which, yeah, that's kind of my next step. Okay?
Well, maybe down the road, if you guys can use this information, your planning.
Not exactly the results that were your initial results, I guess we were maybe hoping for. But it does seem like a big swing between maybe what could be 30 houses up to, you know, if you did rationalize the 10 versus the 17 on a requirement.
Or even a 12.
I mean, then now you're talking 100 houses. I mean, so now is that, the economics of that start to shift, but it's not 200 or whatever number we were maybe aspiring for.
I always had a thought about this too, because I don't know whether you can have this developed or not. It's going to be on the north side of 142nd.
You gotta build to it.
You gotta build to it. And that elevation, and what's the difference between that elevation over there and the flow line with this? So, you might have to wind up with a pump station in. There's a couple of main bucks.
There's a lot to it. There's nothing to eat anymore. As you guys will find out when you have to build another school.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. I'll be kind of hard to these guys, so if you can, if they call in here.
I don't think I can.
Okay. Okay, now we're moving on to the motions you consider Iowa Code Enforcement Contract for 2025. I think you've had a lot of time to, to consider this. So, I will start, start it off with a motion as we usually do, a motion to put it on the table. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion, put it on the table, talk about it.
Do you have a second?
All second.
Okay, now we're into part of discussion. And when it comes to discussion, I will, I will let the, I had, what we're, what we're discussing is it'd be a six-month contract at a rate of $600 per month. For a three-month contract, the rate is $800 per month. And if you're looking for an as-needed arrangement, the rate may be based upon specifics. So, it need to have more accurate pricing. And this is from Harrison Van Osgood. And I've had a little discussion myself, because I've had a hard time hearing you guys when you're discussing this. All of the central Iowa cities that they work with, we all, they all get the same price. There's no difference in any of the pricing. And as I've said before, you know, this is, it's kind of a touchy issue. It's not an issue that I don't think any mayor or any city councilman should be thrust into doing, doing any of this kind of work or saying anything to any resident about it. It should be a disinterest to third party that the city is hired to do the job. It should be a disinterest to third party that the city is hired to do the job. And with that, I'll put it on the table. We're talking about it.
You don't know what happened. What happens, what happens if we pay Logan more money and he can do it?
I jeopardize his empire.
I don't like to put Logan in that position. It's, it's a touchy situation.
Have you done a lot of code enforcement? What? Have you done a lot of code enforcement? Yeah, there is, there is. They've been working with the gym and writing some owners and pictures. And there's about four or five, I think, properties in town.
And so if you don't use them for the month, you still pay eight hundred bucks or six hundred bucks or whatever it is?
We only hire them from April, from March first to October thirty-first.
What is that?
Because we're gonna have sidewalks or grass, I'm not saying we do.
Okay, let's, let's, you know, everybody's here to, would we like to just call for a roll call vote on it? Yes or no?
So, here about the, try for one year.
We did.
Did we like it?
No. It worked well.
It did?
Yeah. But we haven't finished, you know, some of the properties are still in violation. And we're working through that to get it done.
I'd like to make a comment on that. Comment from Bob.
Okay.
Uh, I've got a, a paperwork here. I was notified at seven twenty-nine. I had to be spent an inspection at seven twenty-four and then a re-inspection at eight twenty-eight. So if you follow the monthly program, nobody from last year is to be considered in violation of everything, anything because you can't prolong somebody five or six months down the road and then come back to them. From the way this takes to me, the property, I cleaned up all my stuff in my front yard and then my driveway for the junk vehicle prohibited, total violation. My violation is, has been completed and all annoyed now. I've completed my work on that and I'm not in violation anymore.
Thank you for doing that.
Five months later, how can I be in violation? If you go by the monthly statements that came to me, in thirty days I was re-inspected and I could be, well, in my eyes, I'm done. So nobody, so last year should be in violation of anything because you can't prolong this five months down the road and tell them that you're still in violation? I, I cleaned up my property. So that's, that's, that's my comment on that. Well, and I, I talked to Bob and I commented on that.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Andreas.
No.
I don't know.
No.
Yes. Here you ask, there you go, there you go.
I would lose myself.
Okay.
You won.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Yeah. Okay, motion is failed by a vote. Let's move on to the next one. The next item on the agenda is a motion to consider Resolution 2025 Act 003, a resolution to support of an integrated roadside vegetation management plan for almond. The next one is, you wanna put them all together?
No.
We got to be, we do separately. Okay, so I would, you know, I, in the interest of time, these three, or these two items here. All right.
We're gonna discuss these at the work session.
Lauren's discussion, okay. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion, discuss it.
You have a second?
All second.
All, discussion?
We're just gonna plant, or flowers, or they're gonna come out, or what?
As, as the staff of this directly affects, can I make a comment during this discussion?
Sure.
So this roadside vegetation plan is something that we can use or not use. We don't have to use it to get grants or this or that, but we can get grants for excess training for me, for hazardous material storage, all sorts of things like that.
I thought it was just grants to help with said road, roadside, like?
No, there's a, there's a lot of different things that it can be, that it can be used for. We, in the equipment aspect of it, yes, it would only be just to help. And I mean, they're, they're not gonna give us money to purchase, you know, the entirety of said equipment that we might need. But it, it will help with some of the things that we might want to look at in the future.
What's a possible amount of money we can get out of it?
I couldn't tell you.
No idea.
I couldn't tell you.
Nobody will ever tell you that.
I can tell you that they, I can tell you that the grants for things like training of staff and, you know, like hazardous material storage, things like that, I've been told specifically that those are underutilized. So it's not something that a lot of people go for. So it's just something that Sherry and I worked on and it does have merit whichever way.
So are the grants not available otherwise?
Correct. We have to have this plan in effect to receive.
So, but what they're inacting this plan actually mean? Are we gonna be told what we can and can't know, what we can and can't plant, or can't spray?
No, so I sit down, I sat down with an interview and with Jeff and Trish, whoever, he was on the last meeting. And we did everything together. So he knows exactly what we do. And he told me what we can't include and what we can include for what I already do. It changes nothing of the way we do anything. It's basically just a piece of paper that says, hey, you can file for these specific grants now, one before you could. That's basically where, where it starts.
What's the cost of city?
Nothing.
Money never comes without strings. And if they're gonna show you the strings, I'm a little skeptical. What, what strings are we gonna be tied with?
I couldn't tell you.
I didn't necessarily, when they were explaining, I didn't necessarily see any advantage, quite frankly, to, to any of it. So I don't know why we would have another piece of paper, you know? I just, I, I'm not, I'm not certain that it's worth, it's worth the time personally. My, what's my? How, how many, uh, judging from the maps that I've seen, I mean, we're, we're not talking about a whole lot of space.
No, we're not, no.
Which would, I would imagine severely limit the amount of grant money that would ever be approved.
It does. And I, I will tell you for a fact that that's, that's a hundred percent the truth. If we were a larger city, we could probably utilize.
This was just for small cities that program this.
This one? Yeah, okay.
Is there any variance, any, anything we could add to these maps?
No, we went over everything. That is, what do you legally allow to put on it? Whereas I'm sure looking at those maps, you can go, yeah, he does this area and that's not on there, or this area and that's not on there. And that's just because of the requirements for this. So we put everything we were legally allowed to put on there.
Is there a deadline to our adopting it?
No, not as far as I am aware. Sherry?
No.
Can I make a motion, go ahead? Roll call. Make a motion, go ahead.
Mr. Andreas.
I don't know. I mean, it doesn't seem like it matters going where you are. My vote seems somewhat irrelevant.
All vote, no.
Mr. President?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
No.
Harry Smith?
No.
Okay, the next one up is a motion to consider Resolution 25 Act 004, a resolution for supporting the 2024 whole county hazard mitigation plan. Do you have a packet? Send the packet. Have a motion? Make a motion? Do I have a second?
All second.
Discussion? Who wants?
This one, this one seems like a good thing to me. It's, it's, I don't see that it's, she was very clear that we have to accept nothing. We don't want it, so it's completely up to us. But I also think it's a good thing to have it, should, should we need it. So there's been, been a couple times, you know, the last few years that we've needed it. So I, I think it's good, it's a good thing to have. And we've, we've had this before. This is not something new, we just have to do it again.
Yeah, they're, they're theirs.
Because of the way that you've got it before.
Anything else? Anybody else? Roll call.
Mr. Andreas?
Yes.
President?
You have a second?
Smith?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, on the back page, motions to consider Resolution 2025 Act 005, a resolution for supporting or approving wages for city employees. Do I have a motion?
No.
You gotta put it on there. Do I have a motion? Put it on the table? No?
They don't need to sit there. They want to do.
Yeah, they're here, they're here.
What are we approving?
Yeah, so you have to, you have to keep the wages the same, do a little increase.
Oh, that's something we can talk about. A motion to put it on the table?
I make a motion, put it on the table. Do I have a second?
All second.
Okay, Sherry would like to, would like to have you to answer any questions. You said on the back, you had.
What are we, what are we, what are we doing? What are we, what are we talking about? Are we out of due, are we taking away?
Well, you can, you can grant wage increases or you can deny wage increases. Or you can, or you can leave them the same. The budget is, deadline is approaching fast and that's why it's on the table.
Shouldn't, shouldn't they move the work session first? I don't, whenever we bring something up for a vote at a council meeting, it hasn't even discussed before and that feels very wrong.
Well, I just.
Who, who put it there?
You asked the lady until you came back to do the wages.
Right.
And we need to have the public hearing for the budget at the end of the month in order to stay compliant with the state, that's why it's on this one.
So we need to do this, we're talking about the budget, then what?
We need to set the public hearing for the month of the thirty-first.
Yeah.
We're just in the progression of doing what we need to do to get the budget.
Why didn't we talk about it from the last, in our last?
Just probably ask the E B here for this part.
We should have come back for it. We didn't, we didn't have, I don't, I don't think we should do anything with it unless we talk about it, but.
You wanna make a motion to table it till tomorrow?
I would make a motion to table it until, until the work session.
Okay, do you have a motion to table?
I make a motion to table it till, yeah, till we second. Yeah, second, we're.
Okay, all favor?
Aye. Aye, fine.
Done. The next item on the agenda is a motion to consider a resolution of supporting and setting time and place for a public hearing for a purpose of considering the maximum tax dollars for certain levies for the city's proposed fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. Do I have a motion to put it on the table?
I make a motion, go ahead.
Do I have a second?
Wait, you want to hold it?
I'm sorry. So this is actually setting a public hearing?
Yes, this is setting the public hearing.
This is not voting yes or no on anything. This is just setting, setting the year.
With public hearing, okay.
That's what it said, a resolution setting time, place for a public hearing.
So I'd, I'd make that motion and set a time and place for the public hearing.
Okay.
That's what it said.
I'll have a favor.
Uh, roll call or all the favor?
Hi.
Who's seconded it?
I got Lauren and then you.
Okay. So I was supposed to second, I said I agree with you.
Yes.
Sorry.
Give me first.
Yeah, all the favor?
Yeah.
Everybody's favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Okay, motion adjourned?
No.
No.
Yep.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have two mayors' comments. The first one, you, you have the school board today, do you want to just talk about the voting?
Oh, um, don't really know exactly all the details about what happens with the vote. I don't know, come Tuesday, or last Tuesday, when we were voting on the school board, I mean, honestly, don't know how many people in this room actually went to vote. But I, I went to vote later in the day and came to our normal vote, polling place and there were signage out front pointing me there and it wasn't there. It was dark, locked up. Thanks to Sherry and James, I was able to find the polling place. But it, it wasn't easy. It was, it, it seemed almost purposefully hidden. I don't really want to make that strong accusation without any kind of evidence to back it up. And James has assured me that he, he was looking into it. And, you know, I, I have no real qualms with it at this point because we don't know what the vote is, we don't know what it was. I know the resolution passed over eighty percent or so district-wide. Uh, so there's very little that almond could have done to sway that one way or the other. I know it's a very low voter turnout agenda item and that's just the way those kinds of things are. But it felt very manipulated at the time. And those of you who know me know I'm a little prone to knee-jerk reactions, so to speak, when I feel like there's some shady business going on. But I did find it very odd, just that series of events. Like I said, I, there's not much we can do about it at this point. And, and James, thank you for looking into that. I do appreciate your, his prompt attention to that matter. And he was unaware that the polling place had changed as well. Again, I don't know how many people experienced a problem with that and how many people that actually turned away or would it have made a difference? I don't know. But that's, I, I guess I just wanted to make everybody aware, wasn't aware that, that did happen. And that it was looked into and we're still waiting numbers. And I don't really have a whole lot more to say about that, I hope, tonight. I would like to hear from anyone that they may or may not have had issues with that. Didn't, actually didn't vote because of it would, would be a good thing. We could reach out to the community somehow. I would have thought that they would reach out to us if they, it would have been a big issue for them. I don't know how much more to say about it tonight, because those are my thoughts and feelings on, on what I heard on Tuesday.
So where did the polling place move to?
It was actually moved. We had to go all the way around the campus and there was a parking lot and the door, which just, this, the one thing that really kind of got under my skin about the whole deal is, is the door to the polling place was hidden, not on the behind trailers, but dumpsters. And Sherry had to literally yell at me to get me to see where it was I was supposed to go. There was no signage pointing sidewalk to the door. There was, you know.
Were you in there?
I was working the polls. Everybody that came in complained about it. It was just,
I thought it was deceiving because they had two voting signs here and then they had like tape, like a line through it. It wasn't a narrow, it wasn't anything. They had vote here signs right here.
Where they normally would be.
Where they normally would be. And I just happened to go into Central's parking lot and those were not, yeah, it was super strange. Those weren't completely, it just had an arrow and then you didn't see anymore. So it was like, you didn't even know where you're going in the central.
The schools didn't put up the signs. That's the election officials. And it was our understanding that they were going to do the communication with that. But just like you said, if you have anyone to reach out to, you can all have my number. I'm happy to talk with anyone. You know, I know this is the school's vote and I, I feel like we could have done our part and communicated that to people as well to let them know that there's going to be a change in where it is. And then obviously, moving forward, try to advocate that your polling place isn't changed. Wherever it is, it needs to be that place each time. Well, I don't, don't misunderstand either. I, I'm not, I'm not trying to stir up trouble or, or, you know, poke a bear or anything like that. And I, I'm not naive enough to know that even if we'd had sixty or seventy percent turnout, that we would have swung the vote either way. Because we're just not bad enough. We don't have the votes to do anything when the rest of the visitor wants to do something. It just, it, it felt wrong and I wanted to make it public.
Okay, the other item for this, this confirmation, our esteemed colleague Amanda Woods is going to be leaving us. So that would necessitate a, we'd have to fill a vacancy on the city council.
Okay, that's on the work session two.
On that note, I'd like to throw my name, folks, the root pleasure. And you guys can make the vote on it. You don't have to go to the election. You guys can decide and make the vote yourself. We'll all have enough to election, so.
We don't have to have a special election?
Nope.
The council can appoint and that term would then go to the, no, no, to the.
Just like we did Kamala in the bill.
I just, I learned that today. It will, that seat will be on the ballot then in the fall.
So it's just until the next, if it's any term appointed?
Until her term is up.
If you want to have a special election, Pope County recharges approximately twenty-five hundred.
I don't, I don't necessarily, we did that once already.
Yes, yes. My, my house may not sell, so.
It's sixty days from when she promised she'd leave me to do this, but you've done the research, so we're ready to know when she's leaving.
They're still there to tell you.
I'm gonna move it with Sherry anyway, so.
Okay, I don't have anything else. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Right.